I'm Jeff Borkman, Principal at Riley Elementary School. And with me today is Megan McElfresh, our Instructional Technology Coach here at Riley. Megan, as you've been working with students and staff with Chromebooks at Riley, what kind of things have stood out to you?
Something that has really stood out is that we are teaching students to be collaborative problem solvers in a changing world.
What are some stories you could share that would highlight the work that we've done?
A student that I was working with just yesterday, actually, he asked me and said, "Ms. McElfresh, can I teach you something about the Chromebook?"
How fun.
And so I think the power has shifted, and that's what we want. And then he even went on to say, "I've even taught two of my classmates." So he is really training them on new things to learn on the computer.
Great. So our teachers are really focused on instruction, and our students are seeing the Chromebook as a tool they use in their classroom, but are also excited to share what they know with adults and with their peers. I am with a third grader at Riley. Her name is Melissa. And Melissa, I wanted to talk to you a little bit today about how you use your Chromebook when you're doing research projects in classroom. What are you able to do with your Chromebook?
They send us these slides that we get to do our animal. And you just get to put all your facts in there. You get to put pictures. It's fun.
This is Canaan. He is a fourth grader at Riley Elementary. And Canaan, would you tell us what you've been working on your Chromebook lately?
Well, in art, we have been working on e-portfolios where we can take pictures and put them into it and access it from anywhere.
What art project are you looking forward to putting on your e-portfolio?
My name art. It's a square slate where you can put one of your initials and then decorate it with carvings and other slabs of clay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am visiting with one of our fourth grade students, Callie. And Callie, I'd like to ask you, what do you really like about using your Chromebook at school?
I like using it for writing. It teaches me to type.
So you've been working on your typing skills. Do you feel like you've gotten better with your keyboarding?
Uh huh.
Okay.
This is Marielle, and he is a fourth grader at Riley Elementary. Can you tell me, how have you worked with your classmates together on the Chromebooks?
We have been doing something with space where we have to come up with a planet, and we have to research about it and put as many facts as you can into it. And so far, we all have about 100 facts on each slide that we have. And today is the day where we share it with the teacher and everybody else in the classroom.
I am here with a third grader, Jonas. And Jonas, I want you to share a little bit about how you use your Chromebook in reading.
Well, my reading teacher, Ms. Hybel, she will share projects with us, and we will do it. And it's pretty fun when you do projects on a device.
Great. All right. Thanks for sharing, Jonas.
Okay.
I hereby call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for January 24th, 2017. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungard?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room if anyone wants to take a look at that. And we have one set of minutes for our approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will stand as approved. Next, under Special Reports, Presentations and Celebrations of Success, let's start with our student celebration. Okay, so as you all know, throughout second semester, third grade classrooms across Lincoln Public Schools start hatching, which is the popular embryology unit, with expectant third graders watching, studying, and awaiting the arrival of their baby chicks. This evening, our student celebration highlights this wonderful science curriculum partnership between our school district and the University of Nebraska Cooperative Extension. And I'd like to start by introducing James Blake, our K-12 Science Curriculum Specialist from Lincoln Public Schools, who will introduce his additional presenters this evening. James?
All right. Thanks for the introduction, Don. Very honored to be asked to be here tonight to highlight one of the many programs we have, K-12, that are very exciting in science. This one has been around a long time, since 1993 formally in the district. And you'll hear even many adults that remember their hatching experience. You may hear from one tonight. So I could go on about the program. There's a lot of neat stories around it and many other programs. But I'm really just going to take a moment and thank these partners, that without them, we couldn't have this program. So we've got Nebraska Poultries Industries, who's provided grant funding for a lot of the educational pieces. The Lincoln Northeast Poanous Club drives three times a year to pick up 200 dozen eggs. So not 200 eggs, 200 dozen. And I've heard that's a drop in the bucket for Highline Hatcheries, who donates those eggs to us. And then UNL Extension in Lancaster County, definitely last but not least, they have a highly skilled and trained staff that's out in our classrooms, delivering the educational programming to all of our third grade classrooms. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Cole, an Extension Associate from UNL.
All right. My name is Cole Meter, and I work for Lancaster County Extension. And I've been coordinating the embryology program here in Lancaster County for the last five years. So basically, what part of my job consists of is scheduling classrooms, communicating with teachers, delivering supplies, getting those 200 dozen eggs, sorting each of those into individual dozens, and then delivering those to each and every school. And then teaching in each classroom, and then acquiring chicks for nearly 1,500, or acquiring homes for nearly 1,500 chicks at the conclusion. So when we go into classrooms, we give brief 20-minute presentations. So we go in the first time, we deliver a dozen eggs to each classroom, and then we give them a brief overview of the whole fertilization process, and then kind of what those students are going to do to take care of those eggs so that those developing embryos have everything they need to grow. So we talk about turning those eggs three times a day, giving them a little exercise so they can develop correctly, making sure that they're checking those thermometers for 100-degree temperature, and then always making sure there's water in the incubator so that they have enough humidity so that they don't dry out. Then we go back on day seven, and we candle those eggs with the students, take a flashlight, shine it into those eggs, and they get to see those developing embryos. So it's always an exciting time for the students and a lot of teachers as well. So with that, each of you should have a neckline that our office puts out, and that will give you more of an in-depth look at what our office does and what the program means to those kids. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bryce Cudaback, second-year, third-grade teacher at Clefcorn Elementary. What I like most about the embryology unit is how excited the students come from second grade to learn about embryology. They seem to already know about it, whether it's from older students or older siblings, and then they remember it the rest of their lives. Like James said, I even hatch chicks in third grade in a small town in Gibbon, Nebraska, and I know it's something I will definitely remember. So it's a lot of fun. The embryology unit goes along with life cycles. So students learn about complicated life cycles, like frogs and butterflies. They also learn about more simple life cycles, like a mammal would have. And then they get to kind of compare the different stages of those life cycles to the different stages that a chick embryo goes through in the eggs in person. So that is very awesome. We even have chicks that started hatching just today, and I will let two Clefcorn cubs come up and talk about that experience.
Hi, my name is Owen Blake. I go to Clefcorn Elementary, and I'm third grade, and I go to Ms. Louse's classroom. This is something called candling. If anyone you know goes to a farm where you have eggs that are fertilized, just shine a light under it, and I'll tell you everything that you will see. You'll see the embryo, which is the thing moving. The thing surrounding it is the yolk. The thing you'll see mainly is the veins, and the white thing on the bottom that you'll see mainly lighted up is called the air sac.
Hello, my name is Ayush Mishra. I'm in Mr. Cudaback's class, and I'm in third grade, too. A few days back, a man came to our school and told us about, and he was candling. So we could see inside of the eggs. So each group got to see three eggs. Our group saw two winners and one yoker. A yoker is an egg that has never been fertilized. A winner is an egg that has survived. And another group saw one quitter and two winners. A quitter is an egg that has died, and a winner is an egg that still survived.
Nice job, boys.
I don't know how we could top that, but if you have any other questions for any of us?
Yeah, I have a couple. So let's start with Ayush. Do you have any family or guests here that you would like to introduce real quick?
My mom.
Hi, Mom.
Hi.
And how about you, On? Are you related to anybody over here?
My mom and my dad.
And who's your dad?
My sister.
All right. Yeah. And sister? Oh, don't forget sister. Do you have to help your dad with the science sometimes?
Uh huh.
Just be patient and speak slowly. Yeah, good for you. All right. Were there any questions from other board members?
It's hard to top this.
It is hard to top this. Thank you both. I know that this takes time out of your evening to come and talk with us, but I appreciate very much you coming and spending time and talking about what you were doing with your science project. Thanks, guys. James, do you have anything you want to finish up with?
No, that's it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, boys. Okay. Next, that brings us to the 2015-2016 Combined Community Campaign. I'd like to recognize John Neal and friends.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to be part of the Combined Community Campaign each year. We're very fortunate to be partnered with such impactful organizations, such as United Way of Lincoln Lancaster County, community health charities, and community service funds. The services they provide to our students and families make an incredible difference in the success, not only of our community, but because of the support for the families and the students, they directly impact the success of the district. In fact, some of our programs are direct beneficiaries of the United Way in this campaign, including Teammates of Lincoln, our CLC program, and the Backpack program. So it not only helps support the community as a whole, but it has direct impact on Lincoln Public Schools. Tonight, we're here to recognize those schools with the highest percentage participation. But I'm going to sneak in a couple extra thank yous, and I also would like to introduce an additional guest here today. In your board agenda, there are a list of 47 schools and programs that are at least 50% participation. This represents our highest percentage ever of schools and departments reaching that 50% number, which is our district goal. So we're very pleased with that result. And over the last five years, we continue to improve our numbers each of those years. And our campaign of $156,000 for the United Way, community health charities, and community service funds, combined with the Backpack program every year, shows the generosity of our staff by raising over a third of a million dollars that goes back into our community every year, as well as the hundreds of other endeavors that each of our schools and departments takes part in. So before we get to the recognition, we're very fortunate today to have a few staff members from the United Way. And I'd like to bring up to the podium Executive Director, Brian Watchman, to share a couple thoughts about our partnership. Brian?
Thanks, John. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to first say, I was with my son a couple hours ago, and he said that he's checking weather patterns. He said I could make a floor motion for a snow day. Is that how it works?
Help me join the list.
I've heard stories about how many emails are gotten on that. But I am just honored to be here today to thank LPS for another great campaign. And I don't want to forget that Connie Duncan and her husband chaired our campaign for the whole community, and we're shooting to raise about $7 million. And we're also proud to have Steve on our board, and Dr. Joel will be chairing our board next year, so we're really proud of that, because it's just such a great partnership. I mean, when you think of Teammates, and you think of child guidance and all the programs that we fund, and, you know, over two-thirds of our funds that we raise go to help kids in need and in the community. And so we couldn't do that without LPS. Just an example is just Teammates. And it's amazing, the staff at the schools, how they coordinate the Teammates program for the teammates and make it happen, and even tell us what classes they can't miss and all those things. So it's just one little example. The community learning centers, you know, we're proud to partner with LPS on the community learning centers. And just, you know, it could go on and on, and I know that I have a limited, only 30 minutes to share. So we're proud of LPS, over 3,000 donors. If you look at all of the 450 organizations we raise money from, LPS is usually in our top 10, so it's very significant. And those funds are, you know, vetted and sent out to the community and to programs and initiatives. We have an initiative at Mcfee that you're all aware of, that of course, we couldn't do without the support of the teachers and the staff and Dr. Joel and the whole board. So we're proud to do that initiative called Engage and Power graduate. We're expanding it out to Adams Elementary, and so we want to keep working with you. And you're coming back by giving us funds back to also help fund these programs. So thanks for having me out here tonight, and I guess we'll go on and do some recognition.
I'll let you do that, handing and handshaking. First, we're going to recognize our elementary schools. We have two to recognize tonight, because we had two at 100% participation. The first is Beatty Elementary. And here to accept the award is Principal Sean Bailey. Sean?
Sean, would you like to?
On behalf of the Beatty staff, I'd like to thank John Neal for his outstanding leadership of the United Way campaign. Also like to thank the board for your support of this meaningful partnership. We'd also like to thank the United Way for its collaboration with LPS on all of our educational goals. It's an honor to serve the Lincoln community alongside all of you. Thank you.
Our next honoree is Friedstrom Elementary School. Principal Vicky Schulenberg in Friedstrom. This is the second time in three years they have been so honored.
Well, thank you so much to John for his leadership, to the board for this recognition. I'm happy to accept it on behalf of the Friedstrom staff. Donating to United Way is just an important part of the way that we help serve children and families in this community. We do every day at school, and United Way is another special organization to us because of all the impact and all the work that they do with children and families. So thank you, United Way.
Now, we jumped to middle school, but we keep it in the family, because our honoree is Sko Middle School, and Principal Bill Schulenberg. Bill? This is Sko's fourth year in a row as the honoree.
Thank you, John, and thank you again for your leadership in this. You know, the best part of tonight is, and I was reminded by Pat Hunter-Purle that I get credit for a date night. So thank you all for that. But seriously, I think one of the things that's important at Sko Middle School, we started eight years ago with a foundation of a mission statement, and a very large word of that mission statement is to serve. And we spend each day talking with our kids about how they can serve their community, and we certainly want to model that. And so in doing so, we're always looking for ways that we can do that, and the United Way is one way that we can model our service to the community. So thank you to the board, and thank you again to the United Way.
And finally, Southeast High School. Here is Principal Brent Tolson, and this is Southeast's third year in a row is honored. Brian?
Well, I will echo the thoughts. Thank you, John, for your leadership, and also Bill's idea that as administrators, one of the greatest lessons that we can teach our students is the lesson of service. In fact, service is part of our mission statement at Southeast. It's learning leadership and service. And so as adults, when we get an opportunity to model service, knowing that our contribution and participation helps those that we serve every day in our schools, it's really a win-win situation. So I want to thank the United Way for being partners with us and helping us do the jobs that we do every day and making a real difference for our students. Thank you, United Way, and thank you, board. I just wanted to also thank John for being the point person, and we call it the campaign coordinator. But when you have a campaign with this many employees and buildings, it really means a lot to have someone as a point person. So I want to thank you. And Starlet Barretsky and her staff for working with John, and we're pumped to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. And I want to thank, because it really is Lamika Collier who does just a ton of work to make things work, and so I want to thank Lamika for her work in organizing this. And what you saw with the principals here is really what makes the campaign successful. It would be impossible for me to organize a campaign at 87 sites. The principals that were in front of you, when you look back to our directors in the back of the room, they're all leading efforts. The principals that are probably still in their offices right now working, they're making this work, and they're making this work every year. So I want to thank them. And Starlet, she gets 6,000 packets of information ready, and all the labels and all the envelopes and everything at the beginning of every year, then helps us throughout the 12 months, not only organizing the current campaign, helping with details afterwards, but also then in prepping for the following campaign. So I'd like to thank the United Way, the United Way staff, Connie and her husband for their chair work this year, and really appreciate the opportunity to share this with you and the community.
Thank you, John. All right. Next, that brings us to public comment. And I do have one blue card from Merrily Bradley, if you would like to come up. And the way this works is we will give you five minutes as soon as you start speaking.
I don't have hands out, but they can have it when I'm done. I'm Merrily Bradley. I'm a mom of six. Four of my kids are 10 Lincoln Public Schools, three are at HUMAN, and one is at Y-Song. My husband and I love the school system. I'm on the Community Curriculum Council as well, and I'm a Northeast grad of Class of 99, so go Rockets. I heard on January 11th, I happened to catch the end of Matt Schulte's interview on the radio where he was talking about getting Chromebooks into the hands of second graders. I had some concerns about how we're handling technology in the classroom and emailed him, and he said, "Tonight might be a good time to come express that to you." About a year ago, my son, who's a third grader, had access to an inappropriate image on his computer at school. He came and reported that to me. I took that back to the school and said, "I did not even know this was possible." And that was total naivety on my part. I really thought that the computers were like just full of educational materials. I didn't realize my son would have access to Google Safe Search, which is what all the searching is done through for our kids. So I spoke with our principal, Ms. Lakata, who we love, and she was very helpful at helping us see that, yes, it is possible that things get through, and it was entirely an accident that my son saw what he did. We're thankful that he came to us and talked to us about it. We know not all kids feel comfortable coming to an adult to tell them if they saw something. We asked how they normally handle this within the school when it happens, and we were told the kids are told to shut their laptops, raise their hands, and an adult will come handle it with them. My son did not do that out of just total embarrassment about what he saw, and that deals with kids who see things on accident. It doesn't deal with kids who might look for things on purpose. My husband and I were foster parents for many years and group homehouse parents, working with primarily teen boys. So we know what a big temptation that can be for kids, especially kids who have come from unhealthy homes, to go actively looking for those things. So in preparation for this meeting, I talked to Ms. Lakata again to ask, "How are we protecting our kids?" And she connected me with Kirk Langer, our Chief Technology Officer, and we had a very lengthy talk this afternoon, so I'm all full of information. He was extremely helpful and also kind of helped me understand that the district has an acceptable level of risk that they are putting our kids in, that they feel like our kids are going to be exposed to inappropriate material. That's possible. I feel like as a parent, we are not aware of that. And while we talk to our kids openly, because we've seen what can happen when kids don't know about boundaries and body parts, we know not every parent does, especially not by the second grade. So it's entirely possible kids are seeing things before they even have the mental capacity to understand what it is that they're seeing. In talking to Mr. Langer about this, he had a couple really good suggestions, and I don't know how time-consuming or appropriate or expensive they would be, but it was good to me to hear that there are possible options that could be better for our kids as far as protecting them from that, if that's important to you guys, because it's terribly important to me. He said, "Right now, we are using Google Safe Search, and we have some terms that we've blocked off from our kids, but we can admit that stuff gets through." He said, "It's possible that we could have our own curated image gallery for when our kids need to do image searches that would be specific to educational material." He said, "Our librarians could come up with that, our teachers could work at doing that, and we could have the kids access it through their portal page." That is possible for us to do, instead of just giving them access to all of the World Wide Web. He compared that to, he said, "It's like having our kids go to the school library versus go to Barnes &amp; Noble." There's lots of critical resources at Barnes &amp; Noble. There's also very adult material there, which is why we send our kids to the school library. So if we could be having a school library mindset about our kids' access to the internet, that could do a lot for them. I also asked him about the fact that we are, as a district, collecting all of the searches that happen for our kids, but right now, that is not going back to the teachers in any kind of meaningful way or back to parents if kids are intentionally looking for things that they shouldn't be. And he said it would be entirely possible, although again, I don't know what it would cost, I don't know what time it would take, but we are collecting all of that data. It would be possible to, he used words, report generating technology that would then send that back to classroom teachers where they could see what kids are specifically looking for. And as somebody who's dealt with kids from very bad backgrounds, I can't tell you how helpful that might be to teachers at having an understanding of what their kids are searching for, even if it's just entirely off-task searching, but to know, this is what's going on for our kids during the day. I, as a parent, would love if that came right to me, too, if I had a way to say, "This is what my kid was doing, if it was messing around during educational time, or if he was looking for something genuinely inappropriate." I feel like I need to know that. So I feel like in my conversations, it seems like it comes down to teacher supervision, that some teachers are going to be able to do that, to correctly monitor 30 kids and what they're all doing on their laptops. I know we have the technology that they're able to actually view that, but if a teacher isn't being hyper vigilant about that, it is entirely possible that our kids are seeing things that they shouldn't see, and that concerns me greatly.
Got about 30 seconds?
Okay, thanks. So I feel like it's sad to me to think that we've had twice now with my child where he's seen a very sexualized picture of a woman. Neither of those times were in my home. We've put the protections in at home. I wish we had equal protections for our kids at school, so that's not going to be their story of the first time they saw something that they shouldn't have. Thank you so much. You are welcome to have this if you want to. And I don't know if there's questions for me. I'm happy to be a resource in any way I can.
I guess I'd just respond, thanks for reaching out and thanks for coming out to share. I know, I think it's pretty safe to say that our heart clearly is that kids would not come across inappropriate things. I know we're doing some things. It might be good for us to look at some of these suggestions that she suggested.
I was just going to say, Don, with your consent, we take this item into the Technology Committee and look at some of Kirk's recommendations and do the research that we need to bring options back to the board.
Yep. In fact, you guys both beat me to the punch. What I would have said is that as a former chair of technology, I know that this is actually something that we've spent quite a bit of time talking about. It sounds like we could spend a little more time talking about it, also as a parent. I think this is very valid, and real concern is something that we take very seriously. So I would ask Technology to get this on the agenda and go through these points, and then report back to the full board, please.
Fantastic. That's what we'll do.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Also, thank you very much for your excellent communication with the folks in your school building and with the district. You'd be surprised how many people come straight to a board meeting without talking to their teacher or their principal. And so I appreciate you doing that. Principals don't know if you don't tell them.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Barb?
I move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Annie?
No, second no.
Kathy, and then Lanny?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 572258 as part of the agenda item 8.2.A of the agenda material for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Lanny?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 572258 as part of agenda item 8.2.A of the agenda materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Connie?
Out of abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 572258 as part of Agenda Item 8.2.A of the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Seeing nothing else? Laura, would you please call the role on the Consent Agenda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Next, that brings us to Items for First Reading. We'll start with Item 9.2.1, the Early Childhood Program Expansion Grant Application. Dr. Stabam?
We have applied in the past for program expansion grants for early childhood. This is NDE, Department of Education, offering funds that are designed to help school districts continue to grow early childhood opportunities. And while this one, which is on for first reading, under the explanation, you'll notice that we've characterized it as two full-day classrooms. There are a few different ways we could look at this. What overall the view is, is this gives us opportunity for expansion, and because you'll notice at the bottom, the application deadline is March 3rd, so we've gone ahead and submitted what we think is a reasonable request, but we also know you have strategic planning and some other things that are happening as a district that will come from the Board in terms of recommendations for where we want to go, but we wanted to have the capability and not miss out on the grant opportunity, and so we'll have to kind of put those two things together if we get the grant, and at the same time, where the Board's wanting to go with this. But, you could look at this as adding two new classrooms that are full day. You could also look at this as adding two existing classrooms, which are currently part day. If we did that, we'd have those considerations to take into account, like we've talked about in student learning, where we'd also have to factor in what that does to overall capacity. But, we have some flexibility with this, but we just wanted to ensure that we have the capability and the availability of the funding should we decide to go in that direction. So, like I said, this is first reading, and we can certainly modify the request as the Board would see fit, if you wanted to come back and through any committee, but this would be our intent.
Lanny?
I guess my question would be if we could take this item into the Student Learning Committee so that we could dive into it to the depth that's necessary and bring it back to the Board through the Committee.
We actually did just have this on our just recent Student Learning Committee, and so I don't know if you've had a chance to read the minutes, they just came out yesterday, maybe. And so, we're in the process in Student Learning Committee of putting a lot of pieces together for that committee to bring to the full Board to say, "Here are the options we might have in the future, whether we want to do nothing, something, whatever that might look like in terms of capacity, space, enrollment options." But, they did review this, and so they did know this was coming, and so then I think it's, you know, what we do from there long-term, coupled with if the funding is available for that, but we can certainly talk about it in more depth.
Jane, I'm on that Committee, so I'm aware of what we've talked about.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking technology, Lanny. Sorry when you just said that.
Yeah, I'm on that one, too, but yeah.
Sorry.
I would like to see this.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yes, I would like to see this come back through Committee, though.
Okay.
Matt?
Can you explain the two-day thing again to me?
Yes.
Two full days, but then what was the second option? I didn't quite understand that second option.
We have existing part-day classrooms right now.
Yeah.
And so, the funding could also be used to expand those to full day.
Oh, okay.
But, we would have to do that then with the understanding of what that does to our overall capacity.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things we've been talking about in Committee that's complex as part of this, is because we have to retain capacity for three-year-olds who turn four during the course of the year and need placement because of special ed verifications. It's the waiting list that the Committee is considering, and so there are a lot of factors that go into that.
I remember, Annie, I think it was you, but either one of you, isn't there some kind, you guys are looking at some options. What's kind of the timeframe on sort of bringing some of those back to us?
I'll defer to the Board or the Committee Chair.
Well, we've been looking at that. We started just this past time, learning a little bit about what would be, what's capacity for us, looking at what's the ultimate capacity, what are our numbers, how are they going up? Learning that we've gone up, jumped up quite a bit in the last year alone, mostly because of the NDE requirement for three-year-olds. Correct me if I'm wrong. And looking at a waiting list at the moment of 803 students, looking at that along with all the other early childhood opportunities that have started up in the city and the continuing of the growth. We are not at the point yet of saying, "Oh, this is the great idea. We were mostly studying first at..." What is, where are we at? What do we look at capacity? What can we possibly handle? This is a great step in that this is, well, we have 803 in our waiting list, so we have to keep kind of building and moving forward. When are we going to have kind of an answer? Our goal was be with the strategic planning this summer, when we have those conversations and what some of the ideas come through, that we'd be bringing to that conversation kind of a plate, if you would, of possible options. That was our goal. Am I correct?
Yep, exactly what I recall.
As well as, you know, that's our same goal with looking at, you know, when we get up through, how are we also possibly going to handle high school, focus schools, stuff like that. Those are the two areas that we're giving some deep looks at.
So, I guess my concern with this application is that it's putting full day, implementing full day before we have the chance to look at that, the options and make a decision on that. Is that...
Well, I would disagree in the sense that this is, well, no, I don't disagree. That would be correct. We don't have an answer yet. What we do know is we have a waiting list. And so, to me, this is an option of, and we also know we have very limited abilities for expansion at this point. Am I correct on that?
Right. Part of it is just the physical space.
Physical space.
What the application going in does is it allows us to access that money, should we make the choices that we do want to do expansion. If we don't apply for the funding, then we would have no chance of accessing that NDE funding.
So, to me, this is kind of getting the ducks in a row, so that we would have, beginning the funding for it, we're looking at where we could expand, and the question is, next, one of the next questions will be exactly how we can do that. Do we want to try two full days as, you know, how does this work for us? What do we really need? We kind of know some of those answers, but we could look at it that way. We could look at it as we want to service more children.
Right.
Versus the full day, looking at the pros and cons of doing those two. And I think we're not at that point of yet. I think we're still looking at those pros and cons, and coupled with our physical capabilities, this would be, to me, we need this in the row to be able to say we even can afford to do something, make a step.
As I've been visiting schools, I ask principals, and they so often say, "We, you know, we've got a waiting list. We need to take care of a waiting list before we expand the length of the day." And that's just the continued feedback I've heard from principals, so that's kind of part of that.
And good that Dr. Stabam pointed this out, that this doesn't tie us into doing, having to do full days, but it allows us to take a look at that.
Sure.
Correct. And Kara, correct me if I'm wrong, it could also be an additional four half-day programs. So, we've characterized it as two full days in terms of the expansion capability that it would allow for us to have. You have to kind of give an indication of to what degree you want to expand your programming for the grant.
Okay. And my understanding that physically, our ability to expand is fairly limited. Was it five? Is that my right? I mean, we're physically very limited in where we can expand to. So, we are, we have some decisions to make within some pretty strong boundaries.
Yeah.
The Committee's also talked about, as we look at options as a district, typically, you've had them in our elementary schools. There's opportunity to explore in community partnerships in alternative locations, and so I think those are some of the other things the Committee is hoping to have as part of a recommendation.
Barb?
First of all, I commend the staff for going and pursuing this grant. It sounds like there's a lot of flexibility with this grant, and then always with grants, you can decline them if you wish, if things change in the future. But, to be part of this conversation, I really am interested in seeing this compare data and see if the studies that have been done in other parts of the country that indicate that a full day is much more effective and creates lasting change in young children's lives that come from impoverished backgrounds, troubled backgrounds, and that those changes last throughout their school experience. That's what the data is indicated. And I know that with one grant, you can't go and capture that kind of data locally, but we can have a little bit of a taste and a feel. And I just would like to remind all of us that we always have to ask the question of, are our programs effective? Are they meeting the goals that we want them to meet? Because you can go and serve a waiting list, and if that service is not as effective as it should be, then really, that's not a good investment. So, we have to weigh the needs of a waiting list with the needs to be effective, and sometimes we need to look at effectiveness as a very important value. And so, I hope that this particular grant, that you are lucky enough to get the award, first of all, that we could look at those issues, those questions. Is full day effective here? Thanks.
We've got Kathy, and then Annie.
I don't disagree that if you had perfect world and could give everything that everybody needed for a full day, would be effective. But, I would question that taking a child's opportunity to have a half-day instead of nothing would be even worse. And from my perspective, if a child needs a half, needs to have some type of pre-K, a half-day gives them an introduction into a school life. I was lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom, and I still set my children to half-day pre-K, and they all did pretty well. I have a sibling who is below the poverty line, and one of her children did, and one of her children did not have the pre-K, and it was half-day. And the one who didn't have the half-day significantly struggled a lot more than the one who did. Now, that's a personal experience, so I guess if I were asking for data, I would ask the effectiveness to, if we can look at the students who've attended half-day pre-K for us and look at their success in schools. It's just like with the Community Learning Centers. We know 20 days with the Community Learning Centers, if they go to a program, they're better on standardized tests. I'm sure we have data that shows that our students that have been in a half-day program, what their success rate in schools are. So, I would ask the Committee, the Student Learning Committee, to look at that data. I remember when we put in all-day kindergarten and the struggle to put in the spaces for it. And I know that that would be our major investment here in to do an all-day program, is that we would have to put in classrooms probably all over the city. I'm just guessing. And so, I like, I like kids that are affected by change, and I like kids to be exposed to things that sometimes they can't have at home, or they're not lucky enough to have at home, or an enrichment of what they have at home. A lot of parents pick those kind of opportunities for their kids for a variety of reasons. So, I would like the Committee to look at the effectiveness of both.
I've got Annie, and then Barb.
Excuse me. Well, the Student Learning Committee will take those comments. I think you said something really good for us to remember, is that as that meeting goals we want to meet. So, kind of first of all, looking at what are our goals and for our, for our youth from so early and throughout. And so, how are we wanting to meet those needs? And how are we wanting to meet, meet those goals, and if, are we doing an effective job of doing that? Because I would say at this point in time of an overview of looking at our early childhood programs, they are effective programs. They're very good programs. They're solid programs. Are they the best and/or are they meeting the goals we want to meet? I think is a really good question that you put out there, that I've written down, that I think that taking that kind of puts another kind of lens on how to look at this whole issue. And I just want to say that one reason we're gathering this information, and we've gotten some really good, some readings, some that you've sent, some that we've gotten, some other folks, we're starting to put it in, is that we really going to have to do some creative dreaming outside the box. We've been asked, Ms. Lucas, like, "If you could dream, and what would you do?" And, you know, we built some really good buildings in our dreams, and it wasn't just what we have. So, I think that what we're going to have to do is to pull all that together, to look at what's been effective in the past, what is our goal for the future, and really do some creative thinking on how we're going to do this, as well as, I think, we're going to have to figure out some creative partnerships. So, that's also part of our discussion. Brings me back to, we've got to get ducks in the order. We have the ability to do this. This is great. We need to kind of keep pushing forward. This is a way to keep pushing forward.
Barb?
I want to thank the Committee for going and taking this issue on and looking so thoroughly into it, and I know it's a lot of work, and it continues to be a lot of work. I will remind the Committee that from the readings that I've done, it's my understanding that half-day programs, and many are very fine, and I am confident that our school district has a good half-day program. But, generally speaking, half-day programs usually see the gains erode over a three-year period of time, to the point where it almost is equal to having not had the experience, and that the gains that you get on full day are much more permanent and last through the whole arc of the educational experience. So, that's why I keep bringing that up, is that what is our goal and effectiveness is very important when we look at programming.
So, I know we're not through the strategic planning process yet, but before we've even started that process, one of the things that I heard the most consistently and the most vocally is the need for more early childhood, and I don't think there's much controversy about that. And I think that most of us are probably open to the idea of free money as well. It seems like most of the conversation that we need to have is what the implementation is going to look like. So, the grant application will be back to us for action at our next meeting, and in the meantime, thank you to Student Learning for digging into this a little bit deeper. It's possible we're going to need a little bit more conversation beyond the Committee meeting, maybe a work session with the full Board. I have the sense that this is a topic that several Board members would like to weigh in on, so thank you for taking, picking up the banner on that. And so, if there's nothing else on this then, then this will be back for action at our next meeting. And that brings us to Item 9.2.2, the Resolution for Option Enrollment Students for 2017-2018. Jane?
This is the yearly resolution that has to come before the Board for purposes of option enrollment, and this is for the 2017-2018 school year.
Questions? Kathy?
It's not really a question, it's just an observation for our parents. A lot of people, I don't know the difference between option enrollment or transferring. And I optioned into this, this building. You didn't option into a building, you optioned into a district. Yesterday, at the Nebraska Association's of School Boards Legislative Conference, a significant discussion on option enrollment was really Nebraska's choice. Nebraska can, Nebraska students have the opportunity to option into any school district in the state if there's space. And we know we have significant numbers of kids who option in to Lincoln Public Schools, and we have students that option into districts surrounding Lincoln Public Schools. We have to set a date every year, and a lot of parents have called in the past, so I want to highlight for those parents that might be thinking of optioning their students, that it's August 4th of 2017 if we adopt this resolution. I think it's a good plan to have in place. I think we have a lot of students that are just looking for something a little different than what their home district is. But, Jane, can you give just a brief description of option enrollment if I missed anything here?
You're right, they are commonly confused terms. Option enrollment and permits are the in-district process, so you're correct. An option student is a student coming from another school district to our district or from our district out to another school district. The choice program or permit process, as we often refer to it, is students who are within the Lincoln Public Schools district are assigned to an attendance area school and then request to attend another attendance area school within Lincoln Public Schools. Both of those have some deadlines attached to them per Board policy, and both of those allow kids to have choice.
The questions or comments? All right, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. All right, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. Next, that brings us to tonight's action items. We'll start with item 10.1.1, the newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln. Lanny?
I'll start with the motion. Move that the board approve the proposed attendance area assignments for Grandview Estates First Edition, which are Wyson, Pound, later to be Moore, and then Southeast High School.
I saw Matt first.
I'll second it.
Comments?
This was before us at our last meeting. We'd be happy to answer any questions from the planning committee.
Questions? All right, pretty straightforward. Laura, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Did I call you, Lanny?
You did not.
I did not. Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to item 10.1.2, Chromebooks for 2017 Distribution. Lanny?
On behalf of the Technology Committee, move approval of item 10.1.2.
Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Discussion. Lanny?
All right. I also wanted to point out that this item is for second reading. When it was up for first reading, we had a discussion as a board about expanding the Chromebooks beyond the sixth grade in four high schools to include second grade, and the board received information from staff on the advantages and disadvantages of that. Based on the board discussion, we decided to bring this item back with second grade attached, and we'd be happy to have any further discussion or questions or amendments.
Thank you for that explanation. I think we worked very hard, being transparent and clear, and it's not often that we would